Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to the September 12th, 2017 work session of Forsyth County Board of Education. If you could all stand for the invitation and the pledge, please. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all here safely this afternoon. Father, we ask that you look over, help and heal those affected by recent hurricanes and natural disasters. May they have hope and faith in you and support from their loved ones as they work to return back to their normal lives. Lord, we also ask that you lead us and guide us as we do the work of the school system this evening and in the days and the weeks to come. We know even in difficult times, you are always there to lift up our hearts. In your name we pray, amen. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know we have one change to the agenda at this point. We need to postpone item four D provision, policy provision G A E to the October 12th work session. Do we need a motion to approve that or just wait till we approve it?
Per the agendas amended, yeah.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other, all right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Nancy. All in favor? That's unanimous. Turn the page. First thing up is, okay, the bid process with Brad Richardson.
Good, Brad.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. At your request, I put together a presentation about our bid processes, just our kind of macro level view. But before I do, I kind of backed up a little bit to call up really the contractor processes with an emphasis on bids and RFPs because what I wanted to really do was define contracting is all the primary methods that we use to acquire goods and services from a macro level with an emphasis on bids and RFPs. As you can see, you know, our mission is to support all of the stakeholders by helping them acquire goods and services legally, ethically, morally, sound practices. We have an emphasis on stewardship, of course, where we search for value. I don't think value is greater than just a low cost proposition. So we, we work with the end users to determine what their needs are there, ultimately with the goal of removing and reducing the burdens on them that labels enables them to do their job and create efficiencies for them to do their jobs if they have the goods and services that they need without being concerned about those processes, about how they're going to acquire those. Some of the determinants that we use when we approach contracting is the first and foremost is the competition thresholds that the board has established. Anything $50,000 or greater requires a formal solicitation, as you know. Below that, there are different thresholds for different means and methods that we would use. Generation of need is typically done at the department level. For example, the department will come to us and say, we need to, we need a contract for this, or we need to buy these things. There are a couple of contracts that we run solely through the person part, but generally, we're working with them to help them to go out to the market for their needs. We're still partially centralized, partially decentralized in our processes. We do a lot more through purchasing than we've done. We're continuing to grow that emphasis, but there still is some decentralization that goes on there. The other determinant is the market. You know, we're not contracting in a vacuum from a textbook. The market determines a lot of what we do and how we approach it. Sometimes there are some markets where there's a lot of competition, local, regional things that may determine there may be. Sometimes works very specialized and it requires different approaches. Primary methods that we utilize, again, anything over $50,000 is a formal solicitation, but under $50,000, we use less formal means, but there's still processes that we follow there. Two primary methods that we use are the invitation to bid and the request for proposal of the RFP. Sometimes those are used interchangeably, but they are distinct and different in the approaches. We'll talk about that in just a minute. And we also use other competively solicited contracts such as the state contract, co-ops, piggybacks off of other contracts that may be out there, other counties, sole source and other exceptions that are in the policy and the procedure are some methods that we use as well. For sake of the conversation this afternoon, kind of boiling it down to just looking at the bids and the RFP process, that is really the formal solicitations that we use. When you see invitation to bid or when we talk about bids, we will use a bid when the specs are clearly defined, they're very objective, the requirements are known. Only that is mainly a cost determination. Like if we want a widget, we want it to be green, we want it to have a 16 inch filter, we know exactly what we want, then we go to the market like that. There's very limited negotiation in the bid process. Only low bid is the winner there. That's a sealed bid process with a public opening. We have an announced date, opening, closing date and time, and then we open the bids publicly. Again, it's cost-driven. You'll see language in the consent when I present it to you that says that we're making our recommendation based on the lowest cost responsible and responsive bidding bidder that's meeting our terms and conditions. So responsible and responsive are two things that we look at. Responsive speaks to did the vendor address what we were asking for? Did they supply all of the information? Did they submit all of the forms, sign the contract, the insurance information, immigration documents, whatever might be specific to that particular solicitation? Did they, were they responsive to all of that? Responsible speaks to how we evaluate them. Do we feel like they are capable of meeting the need? We look at their size, their financials, their, check their references. For example, several years ago when I was with another county, we were doing a bid for computers and the number of computers that we were looking to buy in a three month time is greater than they sold the previous 12 months. You look at that and say, can they really meet? So we try to vet out and make sure, are they responsible enough to meet the need that we have? We try to discern that. Contrasting the bid, while we would use a request for proposal, are times where there's more subjectivity in the specs and the requirements. Maybe it's because we're looking for some more services associated with it. We're not just buying the widget, we're buying some installation, we're buying services. Maybe it's because we want to vet out their history more, who's, their staff, their methods, their methodology. We want to be able to evaluate those subjective criteria. Those are where you'll see the tab sheets where we, there's more, it's a more extensive tab sheet you'll see where we're looking at a lot of those non-cost things, trying to take those subjective items and put a score to them so we can objectively rank them.
Technology a lot.
Technology a lot, a lot of the service related things. One of the largest RFPs we've done recently that we brought to you was the student assessment software. We had a, you know, we, in an RFP like that, you bring together the committee. There we had a committee of I T S, teachers, district personnel purchasing, lot of specialization. That was a, an evaluation that took, you know, two or three months of going back and forth, of sampling the product, of testing it, working with technology to make sure that it was going to work with our, with our existing systems. So that's a good, that's a good example of where we would want to look at more than just cost. And the specs aren't really clearly defined as much. Also in an RFP, you're allowed greater latitude to negotiate. Maybe you're negotiating cost, maybe you're negotiating non-cost elements. It may be a situation where once, you know, we think we want to go this way, once we start talking to the market, we realize, oh, really, this is, suits our need better so we can have some latitude to move in those. We may shortlist down to two or three vendors for that. May or may not use presentations, demos, testing. There's just a lot, it's a lot more extensive of a process. In this case, the award is made at the highest scoring responsible and responsive bidding. Now, the highest score will incorporate cost, so cost is a part of it. Sometimes you'll see when you look at the tab sheet, cost may be 40 percent, sometimes it may be 60 percent, sometimes it may be 20 percent. The way we approach that is we look at the complexity of the non-cost elements. The higher the complexity, the more weight we put on non-cost. And so that's kind of how we weigh that out. And we do that on a case-by-case basis. Every contract is different, every need is different. Sometimes it may be a totally new market for us and we may go in with a little bit broader specs and try to narrow it down to the process. Sometimes it may be something that we, we're pretty sure where, we know where we want to be, but we just want to be able to vet a little bit deeper than just cost. Other contracts that we'd use, state contract, there are times and places where the state contract works good for us. Cooperative, sometimes you'll see us use U.S. Communities or TIPS contract. Those are competitively solicited contracts through other entities that are, that we can utilize. Piggyback off of another district. We don't use that very often. There may be times where that makes sense, like if a surrounding district has already done something, particularly if it's a niche that we're not going to need an annual contract ourselves for and we just, we just have a one-time need, we may do that. Negotiated contracts, this is a hybrid that you've seen a little bit lately, where we use these other contracts like a TIPS or a co-op, state contract perhaps, but we write our contract around it. On the consent for next week, you'll see the media center furniture is one of those where we're revamping some of the ways we're approaching those types of furniture. They're all solicited contracts, but we want to make sure that we have enough structure around to say that this is how we would like the scope of work, these are our terms and conditions, in addition to those things. And we'll cite those out to you when you, when you read the consent. Just miscellaneous topics around contracting. We typically, as you'll see, try to award contracts based on a one-year contract with options to renew if mutually agreeable to both parties. So we look at that at the end of the term. We'll get with the end user, whoever the subject matter expert is, like, you know, do you want to proceed with it? Do you want to resolicit? Then you get into the next world point there, which is a renew versus a resolicit proposition. I know there's been some questions sometimes, why, when do we do one and when do we do the other?
And how many times can you renew?
The state, state law allows us to renew four times before we have to go back out. In general, I'll say that when we find a good partnership and the vendor is meeting our needs or exceeding our needs, we typically seek renewal. Now, they have to want to renew as well. Most of the time they do, but sometimes they may not for various reasons.
So it's five years?
Up to five.
And then you resolicet, up to five, but that's the maximum?
Yes, yes. There are some other circumstances if you could, like when you're getting into long-term, 25-year leases for, like if you're building out an infrastructure for something different. But in general, contracting that we're, that we're talking about here is up to five years.
Have you ever resolicited and ended up, after all the choices, come in still ending up with the same company we had from the get-go?
Oh, sure, sure, we sure do. And this is again, one of those things, on a case-by-case basis, you kind of learn the market. You learn where it makes sense to renew every time. You learn where it makes sense not to. And even when we renew, we look at cost still. We'll do some market analysis to see where we think the market is. Some markets are very volatile, you know, paper and plastics and things. If they're down, we may say, well, we need to go back out and see what's out there. We may do some, some impromptu calls to vendors and see where the market is on particular things to see if we're going to resolicit.
So when you resolicit too, like the company that had it has to resubmit everything just like everybody else?
It'd be a random solicitation at that point.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. So what we would do, the contract would expire at the end of the term. We would resolicit a few months before that so there wouldn't be lapses, but they would have to go through the.
Do all the paperwork again and everything?
Yes. It's an even field for everyone at that point. Skipping down a couple bullet points, it's one of the, one of the reasons why sometimes we, we renew instead of resolicit is we currently have about 80 annual contracts that we keep. Now, those are year-to-year contracts. And those are big contracts. They're probably been acquired through bids or RFPs. Pretty time-consuming to resolicit if there's not a reason to think that you can do, do better in the market if the vendor's meeting your needs. A lot of times the vendors will hold their price. You see a lot of times they hold their price even though the market, the market may be a little bit different because if they go back out to the market, there's a chance that they don't have it at all. So would they rather, would they rather secure the business at last year's prices? Would they rather go back out to the market and have the chance of having zero percent of that same business? So a lot of times, it's to their advantage to do that. Because of those, the number, I think when, when we started up here, ten and a half years ago, I guess, when you guys heard me, there was probably about five or six annual contracts that we were managing. So we've, we've grown those. But as we talked about with other things with Dr. Bearden, scale is becoming an issue for us too. So as we grow, everything we're doing is, scale affects it.
But if it's good and you can renew, it's got to save startup time on both ends.
So it's a lot, it's a lot of soft costs that are saved there by not having to go back out for sure. I mean, you see like during bid season, let's say March through June, the amount of contracts that we bring to you on the consent, maybe eight, 10, 12, 15 or more.
Yes.
If we were having to resolicit all of those at the same time, we could and would do it, but it would certainly be tough. And then in addition to those annual contracts, we're probably doing another 20-plus RFPs and bids on any given year just for various, various services that may or may not be annual. Denmark's kitchen equipment, it's a one-time purchase, but it still requires some of those type of things. And then we're probably running 500-plus small solicitations a year through our department where schools will have a need for something that will help them find, find the best, best price for. Because of that, there's, there's times where it also makes sense for us to renew instead of resolicit. But we do look at it on a case-by-case basis. There's times where it makes sense to resolicit as well. We post every, all the results of our solicitations on the webpage. A lot of districts aren't doing that. It can put you in the firing line, but it's not that, you know, we certainly do make mistakes, but we're willing to stand behind what the work that we do. So we put it out there for spoke information anyways, but we go ahead and put it out there as the results. We send a notice of award, we send a notice of non-award to the other participants. There are times where we'll offer post-RFP briefings, debriefings, where we'll allow the company that didn't win to come in and sit down with us, particularly in situations I was mentioning student assessment where some companies spent months going back and forth with us and were very invested in us. For us, just to send them a cold hard letter is kind of harsh. So we'll allow them to come in and talk about the whole process and, you know, it's not always pleasant, but sometimes they, you know, that they hear things that help them through the next solicitations that they do.
Can I be sure, in the big case, it's sealed and it's open publicly, if they don't cross all their Ts and dot their Is, if that doesn't come in perfect, then they don't get it, right? It's the simple, there's not back and forth where in the RFP, there could be, right? So if they don't do it right, they're kind of out of luck?
They are. If it's a minor, if it's a jot or a tittle, you know, we can, we have some discretion there. But if they don't sign a contract page or they don't submit something that's required, then that could make them non-responsive. Most of the time, most of the time it would. Same thing with being late, you know, one minute, one minute late is.
It's late.
It's tough and sometimes it does happen. People, you know, tearing into the parking lot and we're opening bids. We do have protest procedures that allows the market to protest if they don't agree with our process or our decision. Last thing I would say is contract management. In addition to overseeing the process, you know, we, we work with our departments to help them manage the contract. Really, the contract just begins when you award, because it requires that we make sure that the companies are fulfilling their obligations, checking the invoices, making sure things are right. Helping our vendors, I mean, excuse me, helping our subject matter experts or user departments whenever they're having difficulties. Maybe not every little thing, but if it gets to a point where they need some help, we can come alongside them and have some conversations with the vendor to help them work things through. I don't know if that covered everything that you were, you were looking for about our processes. I'd be glad to answer any questions if I did.
No, I just, I had, people will ask us stuff like that, you know, how do you, so now that we know what for five years, yeah.
Yeah, that was good to know.
It's good to just have that information, but I'm good.
Yeah, it's been a few years.
It's all my question.
Yeah, it's been a few years. It doesn't hurt for us to be refreshed once in a while.
Well, we can always refer to it too if we need it, or refer people to it also to read it.
If we have any questions, you're the man to refer it to.
Absolutely.
Brad, when you were talking about centralized and decentralized, decentralized is at the local school, like they would go and get their own T-shirts or they would get things at Pacific for certain activities. Is there any guideline to the individual schools at a dollar amount that they have to bid out within their school system or is that just left up to them?
Well, decentralized, I meant from the standpoint of departments.
Okay.
Under, under the municipal money, for lack of a better term, under, under general funds.
Gotcha, okay.
Is decentralized in that aspect. But to your point, schools are decentralized when they're spending their local discretionary money, their.
Right.
Fundraiser money, their sport athletic gate, things like that. They're not required by policy to follow our policy. Whenever I talk to them, I strongly advise that if it were me, I would be following.
Some kind of policy.
The policy, because if you're ever challenged, the defense is, we have the same processes where, whether we're spending our own money or the district money. So if they, if they have a need, we certainly help them out in that. Or just not required, they get to come to us. And there's times where they do. There's times where it's at a dollar amount where it doesn't make sense for them to necessarily, but we're certainly available for those.
Right, that's good advice.
And we encourage that they, that they follow the same, it's very, the most defensible position they could have.
Exactly. That's what I was getting at.
Thank you. That was helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I guess that's it for tonight. All right, next up is redistricting with Joey Perkel.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
The redistricting committee would like to present a draft to you for district lines to populate Denmark as well as another area that we looked at. I will start with. So for opening Denmark in the fall of 2018, I'll start with what we did on the west Forsyth High School attended zone. And as you can see, we took an area at the bottom portion of the central portion of the west district, which is this area that's outlined in red, and moved into the, and had that to become part of the Denmark High School district. If you look, and I'll talk about numbers too in just a little bit, but, and then if you also look this area and below, which is currently south Forsyth High School, that area will now become, in this draft, has become Denmark High School. And then if you go over to Lambert, this area that is currently Lambert High School will become south Forsyth High School. And so I'll talk a little bit about the numbers. So the area from west high school, and also keeping in mind that the district, redistricting committee certainly kept in mind a future building and projects and looking at in the future when east high school opens and what they needed to do in, at west high school. So as you well know, if we've done this for several years, that, you know, we needed to keep west high school where we needed or think that it needs to be when we open east high school. And same thing for south and over, on that section. So the west area, that takes a projected 226 students from west to the Denmark district. The south area takes a projected 1,564 students from this, from south to the Denmark district. And from Lambert, that takes a projected 389 students from Lambert to south. That leaves a projected, and then these projections are also, on Tim's projections, he also subtracted 100 students from the high school projections for, as a projection for the Alliance Academy opening. So for west high school, that leaves west at a projected 2405. It leaves Lambert at a projected 2585. And south high school at a projected 2436. And Denmark opening with a, with a projected 1690.
And their capacity is to be 25 from down the road, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Can you?
Yes.
Joey, when you look at the map, can you kind of pick out the parameter, like up here at the top, when you're talking about west, it goes along Cassavere Road and goes kind of to give the perspective?
Tim's going to have to do that for you.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I don't know all those roads, but Tim does.
But it's the same, the northern district, the northern outline there is the same as DeSana, right? So if they're going to DeSana, they're going to Denmark. We didn't get into Vicry.
No, we didn't.
Middle at all. Okay.
Vicry, Melstays, same Denmark. This is the same as DeSana.
The top boundary line is seven midway.
Gotcha. So Vicry stays, Vicry, Vicry, 100% theater and brand new one, DeSana, Denmark is 100% theater.
100%. Okay.
And midway is 100% also.
Yeah, that's true.
Because I was just trying to, I didn't have the name of the streets and I was trying to figure out.
Do you want Tim to?
Yes, please.
Talk about that a little bit?
Because there's some people that are trying to read it too, and I'm at the top of the west.
And which area were you starting on?
Well, how it goes, it goes there from 400, it goes up and picks up that little area along Bethelview.
Picks up those subdivisions that comes right up to the intersection of Cassavere and Bethelview.
Cassavere, right. And then it goes down Cassavere basically.
We tried to leave all these subdivisions that kind of feed on that stretch of Cassavere still in the west high school. That's Vicry Creek West.
Right, I remember that.
So that did not get moved.
Okay.
But then it comes down to where Cassavere joins back into Atlanta Highway, which is all midway.
Right. And that was behind that subdivision area that, I mean, the line goes behind there, not all the way down to Cassavere and then across.
So all the way over to Traditions, the big sub, new subdivision that's got a lot of students.
It's in midway and it goes to Sana and now we'll go to Denmark.
Right. And then it cuts over to Vicry where that subdivision was, that little one that came off to, that talked about.
It's a hard street.
Yeah, it's a little street. Okay. Now I know where I am.
Okay.
Okay.
Got you going, buddy. Moving to elementary. Due to the capacity at Silver City Elementary and due to the fact that we had some available space at Chestity as well as Chattahoochee, the committee decided to look at that area. And what we, what we are proposing is if you can see, if you see this section, which currently today is Silver City, it's on the east side of, I do know this road, it's 400. Then, so we are proposing to, in this draft, this moves this section to Chestity. We came down to Chestity, which this section currently is Chestity, and we move that section to Chattahoochee as they have, also have available space. And those numbers are Silver City to, in the section at the top, from Silver City to Chestity is 300, projected 358 students. And from Chestity to Chattahoochee, which is the smaller section at the bottom, is a projected 122. So that puts Silver City at a projected 1067, puts Chestity at a projected 1209, and Chattahoochee at a projected 902.
And this is in part, they're overcapacity. We've had a lot of concern. There's a lot of approved zonings and coming zonings in that area. So this is, Darla's been hearing about, we've been hearing about that need.
And this actually puts Silver City a little under to take care of some of those things that were.
Right.
It does. It puts them at 90, projected 92.7% capacity after this. It puts Chestity a little over, but it's only over by projected 30, 34 kids, something like that. And it puts Chattahoochee right at capacity. I think only two over.
Right. And it's not a growing area at all. We're not growing that out of place.
I was a little surprised, you know, I wasn't kind of expecting this until we talked about it just recently, but I think it's, since we have seats, it's the right thing to do. You have to fill the seats we have before you start doing other stuff.
Well, and you're exactly right. And the question may, you know, come up and say, somewhere down the road, well, our school's overcapacity too. Are you going to look at that? But the problem is that in most of those other situations, they're not over by the percentage that, number one, Silver City was over. And number two, the projected amount of growth in that area. And then most importantly, number three, the schools, the elementary schools adjacent to them don't really have available specs either. So all those three things really caused us to say, well, we can look at it.
And it's more manageable until we get the new elementary school built in a few years.
Yes, yours is down the road, so they don't have, they don't have something coming soon.
One other question, the theater pattern percentages are after the moves are done, right?
Sir?
The theater pattern.
Yes, that's correct.
Or after, okay.
And this actually helps the feeder pattern that Chestity had.
It does help feeder pattern.
That was small, but gotten over the years, a little too small.
Right, there was very few numbers.
Originally, it was good, but it had kind of gotten smaller.
Very far going to north.
Just to kind of update then regarding the time, I mean, the timeline and communication plan. So this is the draft the committee has presented to you all. And then this will be posted tomorrow online. People will be able to provide feedback online, September the 13th through the 27th. We will, we will compile that feedback. And we will, we will compile that feedback, review all of that, and study all of that feedback. And the redistricting committee will then, after reviewing the feedback and studying it, we will meet several times to determine if there are any changes that the committee would recommend presenting to you all based on that feedback. Of course, you all will have access to the feedback as well. But we will, as a committee, present back to you on October the tenth at your work session with any revisions that we may have based on the feedback. You'll have then on your seventeenth meeting to approve the draft with any revisions based on feedback. There's a public forum scheduled for October the twenty-fourth at six P M, only for the high school areas, and that will be at West Forsyth High School at six P M. There's a, a public forum on October the twenty-third at six P M, at North Forsyth High School Cafeteria for this elementary group, and then.
Is that on the calendar?
Yeah. I think that takes us up to our next step, so.
So any feedback that we get, we need to be sure and tell them to, to be heard by the full committee, they need to fill out the feedback on the.
Yes.
So by filling out that, the survey, it goes to all the committee members, and it goes to all of us?
It goes to all the committee members, and it goes to all of you. If they just, if, if somebody just emails one or two whomever of you or us, then that's not, that, that's not gonna get in with all of the feedback.
Right.
It's, I mean, they're gonna, we're gonna say, you need to go online to present the feedback in order for it to all be compiled and all studied and reviewed for their suggestions or their feedback.
Joey, can you flip it back to the high school just for a minute, please? Okay, just move it on down, please. Okay. All right, I was just trying to get the roads, what they were.
While you're looking at that, I will say this too, we also will have maps printed online, or not printed, but maps online, but we also have maps printed that will be posted in all of the affected schools and some of those that are.
And the middle schools also.
In the middle, yeah, that are in the areas that would be feeder schools and that kind of thing.
And we were, and I know when they were working, they were, we're trying to get to that place where we are having those direct feeder patterns and trying not to split schools as much as we have to. But when you've got high schools that are so close together, it's inevitable that that's gonna happen. But this is still better than what it was.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's getting there.
So just to back up, this, the whole point of this redistricting is in part to fill the new high school, which is our largest high school now, twenty-five hundred, and it's also to alleviate overcrowding at South, which is our most overcrowded school, and Lambert, and also West, at least temporarily for West, until a future high school is built, and they'll, they'll have move, room to expand with North and East down the road, but that's not tomorrow, so. It's multiple things we're addressing at one.
Yeah, looking at your current enrollments right now, and, and this is just estimates, but I know I'm close, South's sitting at about thirty-five hundred students, Lambert's about three thousand students, West is twenty-seven hundred students. All of those schools are overcapacity, I mean Denmark is absolutely essential for our school system, we, we must have it. But obviously, we have to populate the school as well, and we all understand this is a really tough decision, and, and will not be a popular decision, but we just invested eighty million dollars in Denmark High School, and we have to populate that school, and we have to populate it with enough students so that we offer a similar experience as our other high school kids get at all of our other traditional high schools. So that's critically important as well, so. The committee has put in hours and hours and hours studying this, reviewing it. And again, this is a first draft, now we put it out to the public, we know we're gonna get tons of comments, and we appreciate that. One of the things that, you know, I will say publicly, having gone through this with this board before, this board reviews all of those comments and takes it seriously, and as will the committee, and will look at it again. And, and we might very well come back with some recommended changes based on feedback we received. It could also be that we come back and say, we still believe in the initial recommendation, but now is the time to get it out there, let the public see it, get the feedback, get the comments, and then move forward from there. But absolutely, Denmark High School is needed.
Well, this will also, not completely, but greatly reduce the number of portables that we have.
Oh, yes.
And that is money that we would rather invest in instruction than portables, because we don't get stake money.
Right.
For the portables, so if we have empty classrooms and portables, that's just money out the window.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Perkel.
All right, thank you.
Next thing up on our agenda is policy revision G A R H with Dr. Salom.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We need to update policy G A R H to include a new definition of immediate family member. O C G A thirty-four dash one dash ten changed the definition. We had it all except two items, and so we've added those. We've added grandchild, and we've added any dependent showing the employee's most recent tax return, and that meets the requirements of the law, so we need that updated, please. If you would, put it on the table and then vote on it next month. Thank you.
Thank you, sounds good. This'll be an exciting one, Alliance Academy update with Brandy Canizaro and Valerie Low.
I just wanted to kind of give you some updates on the, all the excitement going on a few miles from here with Alliance. So here's the three D rendering, I don't know if you've seen this one, and here's what we look like today. Construction is going well, we are supposed to be ready.
Doesn't it need to see them some of that?
It's very, I know, I thought y'all would like that, so there's the rendering. It looks just like the picture, just needs some brass. Construction's going very well, because we had such a great winter last winter, not with, you know, not a lot of ice and snow. We are slated to be done at the end of April, so we should hopefully be able to start moving in in May. The J A Center is slated to be done in August, and Dr. Low's gonna talk more about J A in a minute. I just wanted to kind of remind you of the awesome career pathways we're gonna offer. One that we added last spring is cybersecurity, it'll be part of our Criminal Justice and Law Academy, so that's a newer one that we added. Everything else has been in place kind of since the get-go, so flight operations, distribution logistics, applications of law, criminal investigations, cybersecurity, legal services, fire and E M T, healthcare I T, hospitality and tourism, graphic design, energy systems, and mechatronics. So here's kind of our updates. We are currently meeting with lots of business and industry to look at equipment and look at the labs. We've also been talking a lot with Linear Tech and U N G and the dual enrollment opportunities. We are tentatively planning that some of the dual enrollment opportunities would take place at Alliance during the day. So some of those, like English one oh one, those senior year, that senior year, plus some of our C T A E courses, we would have Linear Tech and U N G faculty and staff come to Alliance to teach during the day, so we're having those conversations now. We are doing a lot of P R and marketing, so we have info tables at all the middle school events. Ms. Morrissey helped me cover one of the tables, the other one outside the middle.
It was a popular spot.
It was, so we've had a lot of great turnout there. We're also gonna do meet and greet sessions at the middle and high schools, we're gonna do that with students and parents. I'll go to the schools during the day and have a meet and greet with the students. We're gonna show them Alliance Academy video, kind of a commercial, and I'll send y'all the link later tonight, that just, just came out. So we're gonna show them a video, and then I'll be there for meet and greet sessions, and then I'll have meet and greet sessions for the parents at all the middle and high schools as well. We're gonna have five big informational nights starting in October, there'll be one at each high school, so one for each cluster. There should be a postcard at your seat, we're gonna be mailing out postcards to every eighth and ninth grade family in the school district. We wanna make sure that everybody is well aware of the opportunity to attend Alliance, and that it's open to all kids currently in eighth grade and ninth grade. We got online feedback from community members as well as current students in our district, and our mascot is gonna be the Avengers, so I think that's gonna be pretty popular with kids. And we are working with Jennifer Crouchlow and her department on what the, what our mascot will actually look like, so we'll have a big unveiling on Twitter and Facebook hopefully in a few weeks. The student application for kids to attend Alliance is gonna open on October second, and it will be due December first. We made the deadline a little bit earlier than you might have anticipated, but we wanted to make sure that Alliance nicely with all the redistricting, and we know how many kids are gonna be attending Alliance from all the different high schools, and that will also help with the allotments from the human resources standpoint. The application is similar to the added district process, so we're gonna collect that same demographic information. The students will answer a few questions specific about Alliance. What are they currently involved in, why do they wanna attend Alliance, what are their plans after high school and college, what are their passions and interests, and why do you wanna attend? We're also gonna look at teacher and council recommendations, we're gonna ask for two teacher recommendations, one from a core area teacher, and one from a connections or specials or elective teacher, and then one council recommendation. And our goal is that the committee will review the applications throughout December and early January, and in mid-January, we will let students know of their acceptance, and then that rolls in nicely with registration for high school, which happens usually in February. Our transportation plan, we are gonna provide transportation from the base high schools before and after school. So we've been working with Michael Satterfield and his team to make sure we're kind of all on the same page with that. So here's just kind of the meet and greet session, so as I said, we're gonna have these at every middle and high school, so a student meet and greet and a parent meet and greet, I'll be posting these online this week, and I'm already working with our middle and high schools. And here's our informational night flyer, we're putting posters of this in all the middle and high schools, and in the postcard is kind of just a smaller version advertising the five dates. I also wanted to share our proposed bell schedule, because obviously, this is gonna be different than our other high schools. It is very important that we provide the transportation before and after school, and we did not wanna extend the day where a student would be on the bus and away from home for hours and hours and hours. So we really wanted them to still have that normal high school time if they're riding the bus before school and after school. So we are proposing nine to three oh five P M. We would be on a block schedule, so we'd be on an A B block schedule, this is similar to what Central did years ago, where you alternate one day's evens, one day's odds, back and forth. Our seventh period, however, would be a year-long class, approximately forty-nine minutes, they would meet daily. What we liked about that is that allows us to still have those odd even blocks. We did not wanna have to do I F every other day like the high schools have on Wednesdays and Thursdays. The other great thing about having the seventh period, forty-nine minutes, year-long, when the students are juniors and seniors and participate in work-based learning and owner's mentorship, they will always be able to leave approximately at two sixteen or two thirty. So they won't have to worry about, well, they'll stay, I can go to work Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but next week I have to go Tuesday, Thursday, by doing the alternating A B, so that's, so there's kind of rhyme and reason to the seventh period. We still wanted to take a lot of the great benefits of I F, so we're gonna have an innovation period. We're gonna do that either two times a month or four times a month, so possibly weekly, or possibly twice a month. Once we have additional staff, we'll talk through what that's gonna look like, but we're thinking enrichment, remediation, guest speakers, chapter meetings for DECA, HOSA, and TSA. Since the school is obviously, obviously further away from home, we do anticipate a lot of kids will ride the bus, and we want them to participate in DECA, HOSA, TSA, and Skills USA. We also have that open lab time, open makerspace time as well, so innovation would just be thirty minutes. Another reason for the block is we really feel, and we all know this from when we went to visit the schools in Nashville, that it's important to really maximize that instructional time in those lab spaces and with science. We wanted to have those longer periods. This still incorporates potentially four lunches, the cafeteria seats about three hundred and seventeen students, so we'll still be able to have the four lunches when we get to capacity of twelve hundred kids. All right, I'll let Dr. Low talk about J A, and then if you have questions, I'll come back up.
Just a quick update of where we're at with the Discovery Center, just giving you a little bit of progress. Just as a reminder, this'll be for our sixth and our seventh and eighth grade students around entrepreneurship and financial literacy. So the curriculum will actually happen in the classroom, and then they'll spend a day at the Discovery Center. Because our Discovery Center, thankfully funded through Mike and Lynn Cottrell, this will allow students from Dawson Hall, Gainesville City, Forsyth, Lumpkin, and Calhoun City, students get opportunity to come into the Discovery Center for that use, and Forsyth County will have the first right of refusal in terms of scheduling our students first, so we're, we're working on that already for next year. This is just the outline, if you've seen this before, the footprint, we'll have eighteen different storefronts, and then we'll also have a classroom space and space for J A in terms of conference room and meeting centers. And just some updated renderings that you all may want to use in the community as you're trying to talk about what the Discovery Center is, so these are really cool, just show some different imagery of what it looks like in terms of the different storefronts. We are actively working with Junior Achievement to help identify potential storefronts that should be in the Forsyth version or North Georgia version of this. All of these centers in Gwinnett and Atlanta are considered legacies, and so those centers have the first right of refusal to come into Forsyth County, so there are several of those who have already verbally committed, and then we're working on other stores within local business and industry in the community as well as the North Georgia region. So publicly, we have three officially signed, you know, Georgia United Credit Union, Delta Airlines, and then the City of Coming also is going to be the government utility provider. And then we probably have fifteen other ones who have committed either for the classroom, the storefront, or for the conference room. So all those have been, they're not officially signed, but we're very confident that we'll have everything in line and signed by December thirty-first, is tentatively our deadline with Junior Achievement, so the school system is working with them as well as the Chamber of Commerce in actively meeting with the different areas that we'd have in terms of entertainment, or budget, or food, or philanthropy. We've had some really good meetings over the past several months, and we're working on to identify what exactly is going to be in here. But these, these renderings really provide a lot more detail in terms of what it's gonna look like. And then, just as a reminder, that space is on the end of the image that Brandy just showed you. And then let me pull up real quick, we have a local board for the Discovery Center, and they met last week, and we unveiled. This is just, and you can download this, I think Sandy put the link for you in eBoard if you wanna download this. This is just an overview of kind of getting into the space to see what it looks like. And it really helps when we're working with vendor, potential vendors coming into the center to show them what it looks like. So there's really, there's no sound or anything with it, but it just shows kind of entry points and a view into the Discovery Center.
Well, that's really gonna happen over the next few months, because if you have to have everybody sign by December thirty-first, and they have to build these storefronts, especially if they haven't done it before, it's, it's gonna be a very fast process in the spring.
It will, and as Brandy said, the Discovery Center's not gonna open until probably August, and so they'll have first and second quarter of next year to do the build-outs.
Valerie, is there a percentage of local businesses versus the others that are, have a legacy? Do you reserve a number for local business, or just whoever comes first?
Legacies have the first right of refusal due to some contract, and I think they're gonna not do that in the future, because there's been a lot of interest outside of that for our facility, but we are going to the legacies first. I will say that we sat one day and identified a range of local business and industries that are already partners with our system, or partners with our Career Path Partner Program. So we have a list of local, so should we, we realize that we're gonna have an opening, you know, in banking or in different areas, we are already having those meetings with, with our local vendors who want to participate, so those have already happened. One example of that is philanthropy, that looks different in downtown Atlanta or Gwinnett than it looks like here, so we just had a really good meeting with our, our local philanthropists, United Way, North Georgia Community Foundation, those agencies partnering together for that particular storefront, so. Local banking, automotive services, so those will be a lot of probably local faces that we know.
So what kind of financial commitment do you ask for a business to do this?
The minimum for a standard storefront is fifteen thousand dollars a year, and they're asking for a three-year commitment, so that helps support staffing, curriculum, just the day-to-day operations of the center. There are larger storefronts, we presented to the City of Coming, which you may have seen or read about, and the City of Coming said that they wanted to potentially do as much as a seventy-five thousand dollar per year storefront. So there's different levels depending on where it is in the center. The Career Center, the Career Exploration Center that you're seeing here, if you've been to Atlanta, if you've been to Gwinnett, Delta does the one downtown, and Home Depot did the one over at Gwinnett, and that's where kids can go in and look at career pathway options for high school. This particular area, the University of North Georgia is actually looking at, rather than doing a storefront, it's a more premier area for them, and they're looking at using augmented reality, so kids using their devices and having different areas come to life, and that way, we can always continually be changed and updated. So, there's a lot of interest in, you know. Um, and that way, we can always continually be changed and updated. So, um, there's a lot of interest, um, in, you know, folks coming into the center, but there's different levels of commitment. You know, you could sponsor a classroom, you can sponsor a conference room, you could just be a fam- family philanthropist. There's many opportunities for interior things. So there's a whole, I ha, I can send you a sheet with all those levels on it.
Mm-hmm.
And it'll, um, kinda show you the breakdown. Our prices are about half of what's, uh, in Atlanta or Gwinnett, just based on the student, per student. Those centers run about thirty thousand students per year, and ours will run about fifteen thousand per year.
Okay. And just to be clear, and I think you know this, uh, it's not, the onus is not on us for the storefronts. It's Junior Achievements. Although we are certainly helping identify who those storefronts will be, but like you, I, I asked last week in the meeting, I thought, well, December, are you, are you any, are you nervous at all? And they said, absolutely not, that this is going really, really well. There's tons of interest, and they are very confident they're gonna get all those storefronts taken care of, so, okay.
That's good. I also remember when we were downtown that, that there was the volunteers that worked during the day, and they were often employees. Are they limited to the employees of that storefront, or could the business who's not necessarily a sponsor allow their employees to volunteer for a day?
It can be anyone from, you know, our PTA sponsors to us, to, um, high school CTSO groups, to schools, parent volunteers. Certainly, it will be a lot of business and industry, but for example, we're gonna probably have ten or twenty days that our kids are going this year over to Gwinnett. Um, and, and we sent that out last week to our PTA, um, you know, moms and dads and folks who might be interested, just to see what it looks like. So any volunteer, um, it takes about eighteen a day, eighteen to twenty a day, um, and so that's what, and again, that'll be, the onus will be on them to help secure. Certainly will help, just like we're doing with the storefronts. But, um, once it's turned over to them, it's theirs, um, we, um, work with them just like any other school district does, um, in the metro area.
But don't forget, you have the University of North Georgia sitting right there with that student body, which will be a huge pull.
Yeah, they're, they have community service hours, and so Dr. Jacobs has encouraged their, um, college deans to look at how they can incorporate using the Discovery Center not only for the curriculum, but for that community volunteer component for their students. So we think that'll be a unique aspect to this too, and, um, we'll have a hospitality and tourism pathway inside of the school, and we hope that they, they can leverage helping us with the day-to-day operations and just to know what goes into something like this. So we'll have multiple outlets, but it's on track, and, um, feel free to use this with anybody, 'cause it really is hard to explain until you see it, and we'll keep you posted on progress.
And they can also, this is a great rendering of what we're gonna be, but if they really wanna see a more live version, they could Google the Gwinnett or downtown and actually see the real.
Yes, and we are there quite often, um, so, uh, if anybody wants to come, just tell them to, to get a hold of or email me, and, um, like I said, we can get them in for a personal tour.
That's great.
Any questions for other, y'all there, Brandy?
One follow-up for Brandy. One of the questions I hear the most about Alliance Academy is trying to explain when a student goes for that, is it an alternative to college? Is it a stepping stone? And I think I know, but if you could clarify.
Well, I've been sharing with families, um, that I've talked to, it's very similar to a magnet school, and we're modeling, modeling it, obviously, after Four Next Generation Learning, the Gwinnett School of Mass Science and Technology in Gwinnett. And I don't know if you read in the paper just recently, um, Fulton County's gonna be opening a STEM Academy, STEM school in North Fulton. I think it's in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. So that is, that's kind of what I'm sharing, similar to a magnet school, very similar to GSMST. But besides just the STEM courses, we're gonna be offering pathways in all kinds of areas, so it's really meets the needs of lots of students. I foresee the majority of our kids are gonna continue on to college, whether that's two-year or four-year. There are some, um, careers that I do think students would go right into the workforce, possibly with some additional training, potentially like the Police Academy or with fire and EMT. But I think the majority of our kids are still gonna go to college, and many are still gonna go to that graduate school before they, uh, start their career. But it definitely gives them a leg up, great experience, and they're able to, uh, just get exposure and decide, is this what I wanna do? Or maybe I changed my mind and realized this is not for me.
Save mom and dad some college money.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Brandy.
All right. On that note, we have the construction update with Mr. Tom Lanning.
She stole some of your thunder, didn't she? Yeah, we're building it just like the picture. That's okay. There was enough thunder. Um, so in the past, we use the multi-page matrix to go over the progress, um, but fortunately, we're at a point now with twenty of those projects done, uh, that really allows us to focus critically on the deliveries, uh, remaining of both Denmark and Alliance. So, you know, just very succinctly for both of those projects, each of the building elements are either on schedule or ahead of schedule with a high degree of quality. So we're well positioned. Um, as I've said before, um, the critical mission, uh, is to get these buildings dried in in November, uh, prior to winter weather coming in. Uh, and each month, uh, you just see that progress happening. Um, also, uh, on the site at Denmark, you see now the roads, uh, the parking lots, the athletic fields all taking shape. While this photo was taken on August twenty-fifth, today, the practice field, the intergovernmental agreement practice field, artificial turf is down. Uh, we've moved over to the football field now. But each element, as you see from the overall site, is progressing, moving a little closer, uh, to the building. Um, this is the backside view, uh, looking at the gymnasium. Um, the exterior wall composed of the Facebook, the metal panels, uh, curtain wall, uh, is all progressing with another, uh, remaining four weeks of, uh, work, uh, to get that done. And in the interiors, if, what you would see is all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, weapon proceeding. We started some of the interior finishes, uh, some of the paint, uh, climate control, the, the HVAC unit startup is scheduled for late October. And, um, that's also progressing on schedule. Uh, you've seen the photos of Alliance, and just succinctly, it really follows the same, uh, critical path of activities of what we've gotta get done, and, um, we're well on our way to doing so. Any questions?
So storm did not cause you any problems, since you're far enough along, or?
Uh, well, you know, the great thing now is you get advance notice. So, um, what, what happened was Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all the stored materials around the perimeter of the, of the project, it's loose and, you know, it's half-built. Uh, the teams just did a phenomenal job, really expecting the potential category five. Moved a lot of that material in because that flying debris is risked not only to, to our project, but our surrounding neighborhood. Um, so yet I had a lot of unsung heroes that worked around the clock over the weekend. Um, so yeah, fortunately, the projects are good. Um, I, I wanna speak for Bill, he's not here yet. I think our biggest, you know, out of the six million square feet that we've got, um, it is really a Georgia power issue, a Silver City without power. Um, but we've had, we had a couple miscellaneous leaks in the six million square feet, a couple trees down, um, but the facility's performed extremely well. And I, I didn't have my cellphone, uh, since the start of the board meeting, and I don't know if Georgia Power is up yet on Silver City.
Silver City is up now.
Is up now. So that was our really isolated, single biggest issue. We had some miscellaneous issues we were dealing with the last few days.
Yeah.
All right, well, we made it through. Thank you so much. Keep it up.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, future items, anybody? I just, uh, thought I'd mention, we started talking with Dr. Bearden on the, uh, it's that time of year for the legislative priorities. Um, let me just pass out to you all, this is just a refresh, we're gonna kinda start by working off of last year's priorities and build on that. Um, perhaps maybe, uh, being a little more detailed, um, uh, for example, maybe asking them to finally, finally, fully fund QBE. Um, that would be something we'd like to see, maybe talk about the local fair share and or capital outlay money. So if you have any thoughts on this over the next few days, weeks, please, uh, reach out. I know, Ann, this is stuff that's often close to your heart as well.
So it'll be on the agenda when? Probably October. We, we, we will have that breakfast, Sandy, in November, beginning of November, so we need to prove something probably in October.
I do, other systems are already having meetings this week, and so I'm gonna borrow the honor some of their stuff to see if we might be on the same slate, so.
GSBA may have theirs out also.
Yeah, they, they did touch on some topics at the, um, actually, if I've got two minutes, I'd like to talk about the large systems district meeting, which was this past week. And, um, just, I won't go through everything, but there was some stuff that we were interested in. They did ask a lot about leadership development, and if we, any school systems had any programs, so I mentioned our aspiring leaders, and, uh, if Mr. Perkel's still here, I referred them to you and a link to our website on that, 'cause they were looking for some examples. Um, they were asking for some best practices on charter schools. Um, that doesn't really apply to us, but there were several systems, Chatham County and Fulton, that were having some issues, um, particularly with maintenance of buildings and things like that, so they were trying to figure out how to tighten down contracts, so not a problem with us. Tax exemptions and homestead exemptions was a huge topic. Apparently, we're not the only ones that struggle with, um, you know, potential loss of revenue. Cobb County loses a hundred million dollars a year with their exemption that they have like us, so that was interesting. They were struggling. It was, yeah, they were looking at options, and they, it was nice talking to them, 'cause I understood how that also impacts the local fair share, which, for us, we've run some numbers. I know Rick is, you would, you would've been so proud, Rick, they were so, so on how much that costs the system as well, so that was an interesting topic. They talked about the chief ta, uh, takeover officer with the new program, and they are starting interviews this week. The advisory board will report to the State Department of Education on their recommendations for that key position. Um, and, uh, interesting, Fulton County is reporting less students ever this year, and I didn't find that terribly shocking, 'cause I think they're all coming here instead. So, um, they talked about Villa, which is something that we've talked about a little bit, was the program they use for systems to help educate the community on how school systems work, how their funding works, how the Board of Ed's roles and responsibilities are, and they really encouraged the use of that, which helped some topics we've talked about for our goals.
Let me just add, if I, if I made of that, uh, took some of those ideas, and we're gonna incorporate them into our parent and community advisory meetings. So, so there, there were some really good suggestions, and so we've actually expanded. Typically, we meet for an hour, five times a year. The meetings now will be, uh, an hour and a half. We're actually gonna have lunch with them first, and we're gonna do some, um, site visits as well throughout the course of the year, which I think they'll really appreciate also. So we got some good information from that.
That was very expanded. Also, how we also use our LLC, our local school councils on that as well. So, um, there was other, few other legal, legal items, which I'll pass on to Dr. Salom and, and Dr. Bearden later on, but that was kinda the gist of it. It was a more interesting meeting than, it was a lot. It was right to the end. Sometimes it doesn't go, so.
Right, good.
All righty. Um, all right, if that is it, our next thing, uh, probably points of information, or that next month, okay. Do we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel and, uh, student educational appeal?
So moved, second.
Motion by Nancy, second by Ann, all in favor? All right, that was unanimous.